Call city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Here.
Germany?
Here.
Lemoore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Ike Angeli?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
We have faith in our democratic form of government. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here. We ask that we work together for the welfare of this community and all its residents.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, first item, please.
The first item is any amendments to the agenda.
Asking to see if there's any amendments to the agenda from administration or council. See none? Next item, please.
The next item are citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. At this time, if there's any comments from those present here this evening that wish to make not related to an agenda item, I'd ask, as always, just be mindful of the time and hope we can conclude those within three minutes. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Richard Mika, 47 East L., Monroe, Michigan. Honorable mayor and respected members of city council. I appear before you this evening to raise a red flag on a white paper issued by the port commission, Monroe Port Commission. The assessment of environmental conditions on the port-owned property is misleading. Historic coal piles on the riverbank next to the acreage where the wastewater treatment plant is located on Front Street was a transient use. Prior uses were Michigan Southern Railroad, Railroad West split through there, and a pole yard was placed there. Prior to that, there was a city canal that skirted the northern boundary of the existing turning basin, which required dredging and piling up material. A federal navigation channel with attendant dredging by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers was first established in 1834. The federal navigation channel not only changed the course of the river but breached a barrier island and altered a system of back barrier wetlands known as the Monroe Marshes. Alteration of these wetlands has continued until this day. The Monroe Power Plant was built on Guyer's Island, which is a part of that system. In order to facilitate the I-75 interchange and the development of other port properties, mitigation of wetland loss has been suggested. However, this concept is short-sighted. What is required is restitution of lost wetlands and a series of conservation easements. You will be hearing more about this as core permits and other environmental considerations are encountered. A red flag has been raised concerning harbor development and alteration of the I-75 interchange, exit 14.
Thank you, Mr. Mika. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Charles Beal, 1650 West Lorain Street. Mr. Mayor, City Council, we got a problem, too. I got three of them. One is the bus. I heard stories that they wanted to move it. And then they're supposed to have a bus station here. Please, keep the buses where they're at because this is helpful for the handicap and for the elderly. And we need the bus, the new bus station, because it'd be great for people in the winter when they are getting cold and stuff and rainy. That's one. The other one is the sidewalks need to be checked more often. Because I've seen some sidewalks go up, and I've tripped over a couple of them, and I'd like to see that happen. And the third is, the big one of all, is telegraph with the sidewalks over there. They say it's a state, but then the county says, and the state says, it's a city. Please, can you guys take a look at that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Other comments from those present here this evening? Not related to an agenda item. See none? Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 1970 under council action. Communication from the director, community development submitting proposed ordinance number 18-001, an ordinance to add the historic overlay district to chapter 720 zoning of the code of the city of Monroe. The proposed ordinance number 18001 is up for its first reading and recommending that the public hearing and second reading be set for Monday, April 2nd, 2018.
Thank you.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that proposed ordinance number 1801 be placed on its first reading and recommend that a public hearing and second reading be scheduled for April 2nd, 2018.
Second. Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilman Lemoore. Item 1917, placed on the floor for its first reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 18-001, an ordinance to add the historic overlay district to chapter 720 zoning of the code of the city of Monroe.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 1982. Communication from the city manager submitting proposed ordinance number 18-002, an ordinance to amend sections 525-1 and 525-2 of chapter 525, property maintenance of the code of the city of Monroe. Proposed ordinance number 18002 up for its first reading and recommending public hearing and second reading of the ordinance be set for Monday, April 2nd, 2018.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that proposed ordinance 1802 be placed on its first reading and recommend that a public hearing and second reading be scheduled for April 2nd, 2018.
Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Germany. Item 1982, be placed on the floor for its first reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 18-002, chapter 525, property maintenance, and ordinance to amend sections 525-1 and 525-2 of chapter 525, property maintenance of the code of the city of Monroe.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 1979. Grant application with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Program for Mill Race Park improvements.
I have a couple of questions on this, your honor.
Okay. We can bring it to, well?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation, place on file, resolution be adopted.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Whitman regarding 1979, that the accepted place on file and resolution be adopted. Comments? Thank you. You're on track.
So, so far, very supportive of this grant. Helped at, you know, at other council meetings and at the Commission on the Environment. Very excited to see this go through. Do we have, last time this came before council, this plan didn't have much flesh. I was wondering if we have something more concrete on the table now to give us some idea of what we're to expect with what we're looking for this to produce?
Well, it is limited from the park plan for Mill Race Park and from where we were. It started, you know, it'll include the installation of an ADA-compliant kayak launch. We'll have an element that's paved near the launch for that purpose, but also we'd be using a lot of existing, the roadway as being gravel. And then there would be some trees, signage, and park access, other improvements associated with that. It's not the full-blown park plan that went with Mill Race Park, so there's some limitations, and we're fitting it within the grant and capital improvement resources that we have for the available.
Would this in any way ameliorate some of our burden towards this project that we were planning, anyway?
Oh, considerably. $150,000 application is what we're requesting with this, so, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
John?
So, I assume the way that this is structured, Mr. Pastu, that this would be like phase one of a couple of other phases that would eventually develop the full aspect of the park?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a big comment. I think the comments from the councilmen are correct, and I think that it is kind of a phase one. I do like that as we move forward to have less hard pavement. I understand we need to have some accessibility, we talk about ADA, but the least we can do to that, then we have less runoff, it gets absorbed into the landscape versus into the river. I think all those things are priorities today in safe, clean water, less, less problems, I guess I'll just say. So, I do appreciate that as we go through this, we continue to look at that. I think that this is a good start for that parcel, it was in with the parks plan as well. Mr. Pastu?
This is the one we asked, if there's public comment.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. So, there is a motion, a second, and I appreciate the reminder here because on this particular resolution, it does request or require, as will the next one, of public comment regarding the alleyway as well. So, is there any public comment regarding this item number 1979 regarding Mill Race Park and the proposed phase in the development as was stated for? Well, this is a grant application, but also a resolution to move forward with this. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this? See none? No other comments from council? There is a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 1980. Consideration to vacate alley on Lincoln School site.
Thank you. I think Mr. Pastu has some introductory information he'd like to present, and then we'll move forward.
Thank you, your honor. And it's very brief, but through the process of planning with the, for the fire station at the Lincoln School site, we found that there is still a platted alley that covers half of the site. And, you know, certainly in this case here, we don't feel that it's necessary to continue with that since it'll entirely be the city, although I think the resolution proposed has some reservation of rights for other utilities in the future. But our recommendation is to, with tonight's resolution, is to schedule a formal public hearing and the notice requirements contained therein with tonight's resolution for a public hearing on April 16th.
Your honor? Councilman Lemoore?
Regarding item number 1980, I recommend that we accept, place on file, and the resolution be adopted.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Germany on item 1981, which is to vacate an alley at the old, the former Lincoln School site. Accept, place on file, and resolution adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Your honor, there was, you mistakenly said 19...
Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. Sorry.
1980.
1980. Sorry. Thank you. I think I read the wrong number. With that, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item 1968. Asbestos Assessment Professional Services Authorization.
Pastu?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. The item tonight, we're requesting city council to grant me as city manager the authority to exceed my budget limitation of $15,000 for professional services related to asbestos surveys. The other part of it is, is also to let the community know that we're approaching a point later this spring where we will be having probably in excess of 20 homes demolished associated with what we've acquired through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant associated with the Battlefield Project, plus a grant that we received from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for seven blighted properties as well. So, I wanted to get that plug in there for it, but one of the due diligence items that we have to perform is doing an asbestos survey. This doesn't include any remediation if we do find it, but just handling the survey, we're estimating each of the costs, about $1,000 associated with that. But did want to let everyone know that this, these demolitions will be coming here shortly, or here in the spring.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Pastu, your recommendation is that the administration can enter into one or more professional service contracts in an aggregate amount up to $25,000. With that, I'll make a motion that we accept, place on file, and the recommendation be carried out.
Second. There's a motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilman Lemoore, and item 1968, the asbestos assessment for professional service authorization. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 1981. Consideration to approve agreement outline with Lake Erie Transit for a transit station at City Hall.
Thank you. Sure, I think it'd be great. I was looking at my screen, which wasn't opening up, but there it is, so, yes, please do.
So, earlier this evening during the work session, we reviewed some proposed revisions to the floor plan associated with a Lake Erie Transit, transfer station that's been proposed on the west end of City Hall on the first floor. We talked about this somewhat in 2017, and then here in 2018, most recently with meeting our work session on February 6th. We've made some revisions and presented those earlier. In order for this project to proceed, we would have to enter into an agreement with Lake Erie Transit. One of the minimum conditions associated with that through the grant agency that they'd be working with through SMART, Southeast Michigan Mobility, I can never remember what the acronym is, but Regional Transit. 25-year term would be that, the language would include a mutual, mutually terminated with the consent of each party. Other details associated with it that it would be significant is approval of the site plan that was presented, or floor plan that was printed tonight. Lake Erie Transit through the grant would be responsible for 100% of the construction cost and any and all costs, such as architectural services for that. And then certainly, city administration would be involved in the coordination with any construction that would go take place. Utilities, if not metered, that we do a proration based on square footage occupied. Maintenance, LET would be responsible for repair and maintenance of their facility, along with the custodial care. They would contribute $6,000 for some site, such as the sidewalk-related work that we currently incur. The agreement would specify the hours of operation for which they would be open, and then it would have general language that you would include, such as indemnification, surrender of possession at some point in the future, and then other standard contract language. And so, present that to council for consideration tonight, along with the revised floor plan that was presented and discussed earlier tonight.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Councilman Lemoore?
In regards to item number 1981, I recommend that we accept, place on file, and the recommendation be carried out.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Vining to accept and place on file the recommendation regarding item 1981. Comments from council? And I think I'm going to start by saying that I know that it was, as was mentioned at the previous city council meeting, Councilwoman Germany, I think was going to ask to abstain from voting because of a relationship through employment. Is that correct? I think that has been discussed, both with the employment and also with the city attorney, so understanding that as well. Comments from council?
Your honor, I've got a couple of comments. I think one is more of a procedural comment. We're being asked tonight to approve an agreement outline that has various factors that would be, that would be ultimately incorporated into a lease agreement. And with, with this type of, with the way the agreement is structured, where this is a 25-year lease, I've been in real estate, working in real estate long enough that I really want to see the details of the lease. I don't want to approve a, I'm not comfortable approving an outline of a framework for a lease. I really want to see the specific language of the lease. And I would, I guess the question I have is for the attorney. Is, is this appropriate for council to take action on, or should we be taking action on the exact lease? Because that's the contract between the city and LET.
Yes. Mr. Buds?
Your honor and council, I discussed this with the city manager, and given the dialogue that's occurred thus far, we thought it appropriate to at least get the matter before council in terms of at least the outline to see if it was going to move forward past this point or not.
Okay.
If this was to be approved, then we would put together the final lease. If council wanted to make a decision that they were comfortable with these terms and want to have the matter back for the full lease, I certainly think that would be appropriate. We felt it was appropriate at this stage to see if there was even interest in moving forward at this point before we spent the time and effort to go ahead and put the full terms together.
Okay. Your honor, I have another comment.
Sure.
We've talked about this several times. It's no, and I'll just state it again publicly, I'm in favor of a transfer station in the downtown to serve the residents of the community. I think they need a transfer station that's air-conditioning and heated, and one where they have access to restroom facilities while they're waiting. I don't necessarily believe that it needs to be in the lobby of City Hall. So, that's my position. However, when we're taking a look at a potential agreement outline, I have to actually take a look at the agreement in the event that that's approved by the majority of council. One of the things that I notice here, and not to be a stickler, but when you have a lease that's terminated by mutual consent, that means whoever wants to terminate the lease is going to have to buy the other party out. Okay? So, if something happens in the future, and the city of Monroe needs that, needs to vacate that lease, the taxpayers are going to have to pay to have those improvements replaced or duplicated somewhere else. So, that's a concern. And the reason why I'm concerned about this is that 25 years ago, okay, in 1993, people that, there was no cell phones except for those that were hardwired into a car. And today, everyone has a cellphone. At the pace that autonomous vehicles are developing, the industry says they're going to develop faster than the iPhone. 25 years from now, we may not have public transportation as we now know it, where we have buses. All right? But we're still going to end up with a transfer station in the lobby of City Hall. So, one of the concerns I have that we need to have in this lease is if LET ceases to exist within 25 years because of changes in technology, there needs to be a decommissioning clause in this lease that requires them to put that space back the way that it was before they put their transfer station in. And that decommissioning clause should include that the price for decommissioning escalates on an annual basis based on the CPI, because construction today is going to be more expensive 25 years from now. So, we have to have that protection. This is something that's common primarily in a lot of different businesses. One, in fact, is cellular. They have, and in wind power, they have decommissioning of the facilities. So, I think we really need to have, if we're going to go with this lease, and I am not in favor of it, but if the majority of council is, I want to make sure that the city is protected by having a decommissioning provision in there that would need to be agreed to between LET and the city. And I don't know if that would involve an surety bond on an annual basis, knowing that we know that LET has the funding to basically demolish and restore the property down the road if they're not going to, we're no longer going to have a transfer station. The other question I have is, I think based on the workshop, there were still some concerns about the floor plan in terms of access. And this specifies that we agree to the floor plan as presented this evening. I think there were some questions regarding the circulation in terms of the exiting still that need to be resolved. And the other question that came up that wasn't fully articulated was that we really still don't know where the ventilation for the restrooms is going to go. Is it going to go through the roof, which means the second and third floors are going out the side of the building? And what's that ventilation going to look like, where it's going to be located? But those are, those are the concerns I have with the lease. They're two different things. So, that's, that's comments that I had, your honor.
Thank you, councilman. Other comments from those present? Councilwoman Vining?
Your honor, that mutual consent, terminated by mutual consent of each party, that jumped out at me as well. I guess I'm more used to seeing it read, either party can terminate within a certain amount of time, notice given. Is there a particular reason why it's worded like that? Mutual consent of each party? What if one party wants to terminate and the other doesn't?
Mr. Pastu?
Well, I think one of them is on our end, and if we terminated it, my worry was we'd be on the hook for the unamortized portion of whatever investment that they had. You know, I do think at the end of the day that what you have is, you know, at a minimum, a facility that would be, you know, have a public restroom that, you know, in the area that, you know, for the waiting area could be, you know, converted in some other manner. But clearly, I think one of the benefits was having that in the summer months, you know, when we have events there, so. But I put it in there just in the event that, you know, if, if we had wanted to terminate it, we probably would have to have something in there to repay them for whatever the unamortized portion of that project investment would be.
I've just never seen it, the lease worded that way, so, thank you.
Other comments from council?
Yes, your honor. Just, it is, our attorney mentioned that, that this lease still has yet to be drawn up. Correct me if I'm wrong. Still have some work to do, to be honest. This is just preliminary getting to that point, as I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong there. And I, and I don't, I don't share the same view as Councilman Ike Angeli as far as the transportation. I don't see majority of people being able to afford autonomous vehicles in the very near future. Like, this is, transportation is, you know, public transportation is going to be around for quite a while. I don't see it going out anytime soon, to be honest with you. But that's where we differ, and I think this is going to be a good start, a good relationship with Lake Erie Transit right here in City Hall.
Your honor? I'll see if there's other council members first, and we'll come back.
That's fine.
Because I might have a comment, too. Other comments from council members?
Yes, I would, your honor.
Yes.
I do share some of, some of my colleagues' concerns with Councilman Ike Angeli about the termination and the length of the lease agreement. If it is possible, I would certainly like the opportunity to review specific language prior to approval if that is going to be a separate council action. I certainly support the mission of the Lake Erie Transit. I find it an incredibly valuable asset to our community. That's the bus that took me to high school in the morning. This is not, this location does not excite me. I would very much like to see a transfer station. I would very much like to see a transfer station in the downtown. There have been other plans proposed in the past, going back decades now, of a parking structure incorporated with commercial space in the downtown, serving the entire community. In addition to a bus station connected to that, there have been proposals with train stations between Detroit, Dearborn, and Toledo, but then Toledo pulled out of that. So, the two other major transportation strategies that have been proposed in the last 20 years that come to mind have not come to fruition. And I don't really see that happening in the next five to 10. So, if it's a, if we don't move forward with this now, I don't see anything else coming up for some time. And really, it comes down to this is the option that's on the table, and there's not really an alternative there. So, though I am not excited about it, I don't find myself entirely unsupportive of the proposition. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Other comments from council? If not, I just, you know, I've been supportive of this from the onset of Lake Erie Transit and, of course, remaining in the downtown because I think it's essential, whether it's as it is or something better. There has been proposals in the past, it didn't come to fruition, and I don't anticipate that's going to happen again anytime soon. Might be very similar to Councilman Felder's thought, is this was before us today. As I, as we read through this, we've heard a couple of things. This is a lease outline... This is a lease outline. I think that if anything is going to be signed in the future, it's going to have to come back with the details that Councilman Eiko Angeli is asking for. And I think the point is wanting to at least see if we're going to move forward because there's been a lot of time from LET, a lot of time from administration and staff in preparing to where we are now with a lot of discussion. One of the items that I, at the work session, and I'll say I was not satisfied with is there was no change to the interior and access to the hallway. And I think there's got to be a way to make that accessible, whether that's now or before it's done. But if we're agreeing to a, the drawings, the drawing challenges me that we don't have access to an area that has an egress from the building unless going through the clerk's office. But it does allow the emergency egress for the clerk personnel, but then it also requires access through that office for, to get to the area unless you're coming from the second floor. I'd hoped that we would have seen something differently on the drawings and that, that's not been resolved for me. You know, transit is a topic that's, you know, not only southeast Michigan, but really across the country. Unfortunately, some in southeast Michigan, transit's not to the level it should be. Lake Erie Transit does a wonderful job for the city of Monroe and Frenchtown, and that's why our voters continue to pass the mileage to support that. But getting past all that, it's how do we service and continue to service in the best we can? We do need an indoor transfer station in the downtown. We do need the facilities, the technology, that's all proposed in here. I wish we could have come to some better accommodations with the space that we had, though I know it's limited, within City Hall. Being in City Hall is not my concern. And if there's language that comes in a long-term lease agreement that answers some of the concerns of Councilman Eiko Angeli, that would be fine as well. But the drawings are what concerns me. Not the ventilation, I think that'll be figured out. And if it's not, then we wouldn't move forward before all the work that's done and the cost that be acceptable, so, or expended. So those are just my comments to start with. I would have liked to seen something different in the drawings that I, that I, at least was my comment at the last meeting. I know the clerk treasurer, LaVoy, is here in her office, and she doesn't have a vote, but she shared her thoughts at the work session that also can be viewed by the public as well. Other comments from council? I think, John, or, sorry, Councilman.
Your Honor, I'll pass. Thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Pastu?
You know, I, you know, hearing the comments tonight, and certainly, you know, I didn't understand the concern with the hallway when we talked about it on February 2nd that the mayor had mentioned. You know, one of the things that happened as a result of the revision is, you know, LET lost about, eh, a little over 100 square feet from where they were when we first looked at this in 2017. I'll be blunt, I don't think we can squeeze much more in there to, to make it, you know, to LET satisfaction and satisfy some of the expectations that we may have here on the dais and certainly with, from a staff standpoint. You know, we, it would have worked a little bit earlier when we were looking at some renovations here in City Hall with the DTE taxable value challenge. We pulled that project off the table and, and we could have made the clerks area, treasurer's area work a little bit better, but unless Lake Erie Transit was willing to incur some of that cost to make those going forward, you know, we'd have to have that dialogue. But I think, you know, with the existing space that we have, we've pretty much got about the best that we can do. And if there's discomfort for it, I'm, you know, I'll ask the question, is there, is it worth pursuing any further from, you know, costs associated with architect, attorney drafting a lease agreement, and even the staff time associated with it? So I do think it's a good project, but, but there are some spatial limitations that we're confronted with, so.
Any comments from council?
Two quick clarifying questions, and I think this is, and I do apologize, I believe this is the third time it's being asked, but we will be, we will have the opportunity to review both language and the building plan at a further date if we approve this. Is that correct?
If that's your desire.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Buds.
Your Honor and council, the motion presently on the table would include the authorization that the lease be prepared and authorization for the mayor and the clerk treasurer to sign the agreement based on the discussion here. If the matter would go forward at all, it would be my suggestion that that motion be amended if it's the desire of the move in the second, and also the council to instead, if it's so desired, to have a statement that the attorney be authorized to prepare that document and bring it back to the council for further.
Well, it was Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Vining, and I'll start with the motion. I'm sorry, Councilman, does that answer your question?
Well, if, if.
Actually, before I get there, you had a two points, I'm sorry.
Well, both, both the building plans and the, and the lease agreement. So I don't know, according to Mr. Buds' response, if that would require an amendment of the motion on the table. The ability to review.
Your Honor, I think that there would need to be potentially an amendment to the motion, both on the issue of review and signature on the lease, and also if there are any suggested revisions to the plans that have been presented that are referenced in the statement on the agenda, then that would need an amendment as well. Otherwise, a motion on the item that is presently on the floor would be to approve the plans as presented and to authorize the signature of a lease yet to be prepared. And so if there are any necessary changes that anyone would want to see to those plans, that would need to be incorporated as well. But I would point out, I think the city manager has indicated that the effectiveness of the plans may be difficult to amend any further to deal with those space issues.
Councilman, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So I, I'm going to make a comment then because I think I'm going to raise that. Mr. Pastu answered the lease space item, so I think that's not an item that's, or the space, that's not a, I don't think it's a topic for the amendment. I think the topic for the amendment is, as he said, if the motion in second would be regarding reviewing the signature of the contract prior to, and coming back to council prior to then authorizing. That's what I heard anyways.
I guess then my only remaining question, Your Honor, would be if, if Councilman Lamore would be amenable to, to amending his motion.
He needs assistance. Mr. Buds is here to help him with that if he wished to, unless the answer is simply no, that it doesn't matter. But I think that was at least part of what Councilman Eiko Angeli was bringing forward, of wanting to see the final contract before something is assigned by the clerk and myself. Partly, at least, to what you asked.
Yes, I think where I was going, Your Honor, is I recognize the amount of work that LET and the city administration have put into the project to date. I think where the manager was going was, he wanted an indication if the council was comfortable proceeding with the project in order for them then to spend time on actually preparing the lease for, for council consideration. Okay, that's the first part. The, what I under, what I'm, my, what I'm getting at, or my, my position on it is that I intend to vote for the, I intend to vote no, because I don't believe that the transfer station, one, isn't really appropriate for the first floor in the lobby of City Hall, and the other part of it is, based on the floor plans tonight, it seems like we're having a little bit of a problem making it work because of the size restrictions. But if the, my position is if the majority of council decided to go ahead with the lease, I wanted to make sure that the lease included some things in there regarding the decommissioning and those issues. Okay? So mine was twofold, so.
Well, Your Honor, before I do any amending to my proposal, I would, I guess, just ask city attorney and city manager if such approval of lease would come back before us. Has that been answered, or?
Mr. Pastu?
Well, I think, you know, if, certainly amend the motion, it's coming back. There's no doubt, and it would be incorporated with a revised site plan, or floor plan, I should say, to go along to, and I see accompanying one and another as well, so.
Well, my understanding is there's really not a lot of movement that can be made as far as the floor plan goes.
That's the challenge I'm struck with, is I think we've probably taken it as far as we can, and if there is some level of dissatisfaction, I'm not sure we can do much more to try and remedy that so that it works for both parties.
Well, I'd be willing to amend my motion based on being able to look at that lease agreement.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Your Honor and Councilman Lamore, my suggestion would be for ease of the amendment, basically to say that it removes the last major clause of the proposed action so that it would read, "To authorize the city manager and city attorney to prepare said lease agreement and then remove everything thereafter," which presently states, "And authorize the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign the agreement on behalf of the city." That would give then the city manager and myself the authority to prepare the lease agreement, but it would come back for further discussion and consideration by council.
Does that make sense?
Sure does.
You have to amend if that's what you want to state.
Yes, I, boy, this is going to be a little bit difficult, challenging, but.
Well, the city attorney mentioned it, and basically, well, you guys can decide what he said.
If I may, Your Honor.
Yep.
Councilman, you would be, if you are in agreement with the way that I propose it, I think it would be fine to offer that you would amend your motion as I had previously described.
Perfect. That's exactly what I'll do, is I would like to amend my motion according to our city attorney's suggestion.
So there was a second, and the councilman Vining, you have to agree to the amount?
Your Honor, I agree to amending my second.
There's a motion, a second, with the amendment of, of removing and authorizing the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, and that means it'll come back to the council. Other comments? No further discussion? I think, is everybody clear on the motion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Upstain.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
No.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for approval of payments, the amount should read $612,489.50. 612-489.50.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have polled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda council wishes to have polled?
Your Honor?
Yes.
1965, please.
Other items from the city council?
Your Honor, I would like item number 1966 polled from the consent agenda.
Other items from the consent agenda? Seeing now, is there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have polled for further discussion? Any item on the consent agenda from those present here this evening wish to have polled? Seeing now, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor?
Councilman Vining?
I'd like to make a motion that all items not polled from the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendations carried out.
Second. motion by Councilman Vining, supported by Councilman Lamore. Those items that, those items remain on the consent agenda not polled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendation carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining? Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is 1965, 2014-18 Lawn Maintenance Contract Groups A, C, and D Three-Year Extension.
Councilman Vining?
I just wanted to be clear on this. This, what, what we're looking at tonight is just for A, A, C, and D? Doesn't have anything to do with the U.S. lawns contract?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good point. Any other comments from council? In that case, motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we accept, place on file, and the recommendation be carried out.
Second. motion by Councilman Eiko Angeli, supported by Councilman Lamore, on item 1965, be accepted, placed on file, and recommendation carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is 1966, West Front Street Resurfacing Professional Services Award for Topographic Survey Work.
Thank you. Councilman Felder?
Just a question, a brief question for city engineer, Mr. Lewis, about the amount of, is there a determination right now, or is this to decide that determination of how much brick we're going to take out and the estimated cost of replacing that brick if we were to keep it because of the maintenance issues we've had with it in the past?
Our mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Service. To answer the Councilman Felder's question, actually, this is for the West Front Street project. This is a project we're planning to do in 2020 or 2019, depending on how our schedules line up. This is actually surveying from Telegraph to Harrison. The first street project, we're doing the design in-house, and that was already surveyed previously. So this is actually a different project than the one I presented maybe a month, six weeks ago on that, but in the same general area, and actually, the eastern terminus is contiguous with this year's project, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. That clarifies the question.
Very welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing now, a motion be in order.
Your Honor, regarding item number 1966, I recommend that we accept, place on file, and the recommendation be carried out.
Support? Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder, on item 1966, be accepted, placed on file, and recommendation carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
No further items, Your Honor.
It is March, Councilman Vining?
No comment, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
I have no comments, Your Honor.
Councilman Lamore?
Do have some comments as soon as I can find them, Your Honor. This was brought in front of me today, was, and I'll just kind of give you the general gist of it, is cultivate community is what this is called, and their mission statement reads as such. Cultivate community is a grassroots effort of dedicated individuals who bring renewed beautification and pride in our community while growing relationships, making new friends, and meeting new neighbors. And I've got a couple of these to pass out. And basically, what this is about is they want to improve the aesthetics of some homes, and they'd like to start basically in our, in our east end section of town. And they want to accomplish some of this by donations and other sort of donations from other groups or businesses. And they're attempting to gain up to $500 per team, and they want to have, I believe they said, I think, eight or 10 teams where they would actually help beautify other homes in the community. And as I said, they wanted to start out on the east end. This is something that's being started out by the pastor at Oaks of Righteousness and some other people. And if you want some more information regarding this, there is a phone number for Jason Matthews, It sounds like it's a pretty, pretty good idea being created here, and I'd be in full support of anything that they would need or any help we could give them. But I know that they want to have their, I see the date in here somewhere, June 16th, Saturday, June 16th, is when they want to start to do these beautifications to these homes. But that's pretty much all I have, Your Honor. And I have, I do have these to pass out if anybody would be interested in seeing them.
Thank you.
No comment, Your Honor.
Sorry?
No comment, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Whitman?
I have no comments, Your Honor.
Councilman Eiko Angeli?
No comment, Your Honor.
Well, I have a long list. Sorry. But there's a few items. You know, this evening, I have several announcements and invitations to the residents seeking input on a variety of topics. A few have relationships to public hearings that were passed yet this evening on tonight's council agenda, and so I'm going to try to keep them in chronological order, the dates in which they occur. They might have a little difference, but opportunity, of course, not only those that are listening here and are present, but as it replays on impact. First, I'll start by saying, if you, we're not here for the work session prior to, I would also recommend the residents that are listening and watching that make sure you go back and catch the work session as well because some of these topics.
catch the work session as well, because some of these topics were discussed already. So first, I'm gonna talk about is the Downtown Development Authority, and the Downtown Master Plan has an open house, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, March 21st. It's at McGady's Downtown Monroe on the second floor from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The Downtown Development Authority, along with citizen participation, excuse me, council participation, and longtime, came up with the Downtown Master Plan. So the committee met, made some final comments, and this is an opportunity for public input. And this is the opportunity to talk about downtown, whether it be business, economic development, streets, develop improvements, opportunity to see what some of those target areas are. So I'm gonna go off of just a little bit here and talk about something that I was looking at, some of that information, and this is gonna be a reference or a recommendation I want to give to the city manager, and hopefully that council will, it's been talked about here through this council and councils past, and one of the things that'll, see what comes out on Wednesday, but one item that I'd like to have the city manager at least start with staff is regarding our one-way streets in the downtown area. We've talked many times about one-ways or two-ways, and I think one of the things that we need to look at is those important streets and getting the traffic flow regarding two-way streets. We all know, we've also talked about Monroe Street and the potential for changes that could occur there, and there were five, or I think, five different proposals that were submitted out of this plan that the residents will have an opportunity to view at McGady's again on Wednesday evening. But before we really do that, I think you need to look at circulation patterns so we can really understand what the circulation's going to be. If it stays one way, then it doesn't matter, it would go on. So my recommendation is I'd like to see and task the administration with putting together some preliminary information that would go to the traffic committee to begin. There's an opportunity there for the public to participate at a traffic committee and provide their input from the residents and others that serve on that committee to start really analyzing, looking at our one-way streets and the potential conversion to two-way streets in the downtown, whether it be Front Street, First Street, Washington Street, East or West. Just, I think it's time to start getting that through a process, and if we wait, we're just pushing it further down the road. I don't think it's being premature to Wednesday's open house, but I think it's an opportunity to start having as much input as we move along. So that's my request to the city administration as a start look. Second item, I have got a few, so I'll try to speed up. The historic overlay that was district, that was mentioned and talked about at the work session is also, has a public hearing at our next city council meeting on April 2nd, and there's ordinance language in there for both council that is here, but also the residents to take an opportunity to look that up and read that, because there's language in there that, as was talked at the work session, and we talk about historic districts and zoning, that, and did go through the planning commission, and I would hope that that would be looked at in detail. I'm gonna save some comments for the public comment later on, but I hope that people take the time to review that and come to the public hearing if they have questions or concerns. Along with that also was the property maintenance code update. A public hearing is also on Monday, April 2nd as well, and just kind of some same thoughts there. There's a special city council meeting, which is scheduled for next Monday, March 26th at 6:00 p.m. That was mentioned at the work session as well. I'm gonna, I need to verify with the city manager here, because I thought it was in council chambers, but is it on the third floor or council chambers?
I thought.
It's here.
Okay, well, that'll be posted to make sure, because I think it is here with council chambers, because it is a presentation, and it is going to be available, be viewed as well. And it's really one of the, one of the most important meetings, I think, that council has, but I appreciate the fact we are having a special meeting, because then we can talk simply about the budget, and I know that city manager and administration, department heads have had input in discussing that. I did mention at the work session, as this moves forward, it's really gonna be a high level overview, but at the same time, we start talking about personnel and changes and allocations. I would hope that we'd have input from the departments that may be affected as well, and the sooner we get that, because soon as April comes around, there's two meetings, and we, by charter, must adopt our budget by the end of April. So any opportunity that we have at that meeting to get to that, if we can, would be appreciated. At the work session, they, I talked about, and I won't go as in-depth as I did at that meeting, but I'll just, those that may have not caught the work session, regarding state legislative updates, Senate Bill 637 and Senate Bill 894 that were passed last week, but now goes on to the House, has to do with small cell towers and placement of those in the city's right-of-way. I'll simply make a short statement that I think that what's passed and what, as it currently reads, eliminates local authority or local resident input on the location of technology cell towers in the public right-of-way. And the example we had here recently, through discussion, there was a resolution that met the needs of the communications company and also the needs of the city council, but more importantly, the residents, to ensure that we found placement on existing poles as opposed to putting new poles with a bunch of technology on it. And as my view, as I read this, and there's, and I'm not sure what'll go to the House, well, that was what will go to the House, we'll see what they come out with, but it will lessen or not, if not eliminate, local input in the right-of-ways that we will have to deal with in the future. So on to some announcements. Monroe High School Student Assembly is, is going to hold at St. Mary's Park at the Peace Pole. They're gonna have an assembly, and it's at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's this Saturday, March 24th. And as we all know across our country, the issues and concerns regarding about safety in schools, I believe this is their way in which they're going to be assembling in a fashion to bring awareness in our community, as well as what the students feel from Monroe High School. Again, St. Mary's Park on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. This weekend, the River Rays and Center for the Arts has a significant Wizard of Oz is the play. It's always great to go to the RCA and see the young people. That starts on March 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Please check their website. I know that there's still seats available, but it's close to being sold out on some of the days. Hope that you have an opportunity to come to the downtown and enjoy the great Center for the Arts. I received an information card today of the College of Wooster Chorus is performing on Tuesday, March 20th, which is tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. This one's not in dateline, in the correct date order, but it's at the First Presbyterian Church on, at 108 Washington, and I decided to make the announcement because it is free admission, and what a great opportunity to have, to hear a large chorus at one of our fine facilities in the downtown. Remind everybody that as we get through the end of the month and before our next meeting, on Friday, March 30th, City Hall will be closed. So if you have business, make sure you take care of it earlier in the week. And I think it's my last one, and might, it's a month away, but we, our sister city, which is Hofu, Japan, there'll be a sister city visit, April 21st through the 24th. Guests from Hofu, Japan will be visiting for the 25th anniversary of our exchange. One of the, in my opinion, one of the better across our entire state, and especially one of the best here in southeast Michigan. When you talk about the student exchange, opportunity for our students to learn in Japan, the students from Japan come here, and those lifelong relationships that are developed. I want to recognize the Monroe International Friendship Association, which is MIFSA, the volunteers for assisting with this commemoration, and I know I've sent some correspondence to council and others that will be coming out here yet this week again regarding the, some of the formal functions, and please review those on RSVP by the date requested. I also want to give recognition to the Monroe County Museum, who's participating with this sister city visit. They're going to put a display on the first floor at least two weeks prior to the visit for our residents to see some of the history and experience that our two communities have shared across the world, and our students, and it'll also be on display during the weekend and shortly afterwards. And I also want to give recognition to Monroe Public Schools, Arborwood School, for their participation in this sister city visit, and those that know that history, know about the dolls, and know what that means. If you don't, go to the Monroe County Museum, and you'll learn about it, and if you can't read Japanese, they'll be able to read it in English. So those are long, but I wanted to go through those, because it will be into April with all the things administrative that are coming up, but also the great activities that are going on within our community. Again, I want to close by saying these public hearings and input from the community helps the council to understand what your thoughts are as we make decisions for all those topics mentioned. I hope you have the opportunity to attend. If not, the clerk's office will accept comments that will be read into the record as well, but you have to take the time to read those ordinance language, but also, and come and listen to the council, so that's enough. Clerk Treasurer LaVoy.
That's a tough act to follow. My list, my list is considerably shorter. Just wanted to thank Councilperson Lamore for bringing up the Cultivate Community Project. I believe labor is also involved with it, as well as Arthur Leslau, Leslau, I always say that wrong, sorry, center. So it's gonna be a nice community, and there're gonna be teams involved, and it's really a great day, and the organizers have been in contact with the city, and the city has been cooperative, so I think we're all looking forward to, to a great community event in June. And then I just wanted to remind everyone, we do have an election in May. It's gonna have one question on the ballot here in the city, and I see somebody signaling me. Well, there are three elections in the year. Well, there is one proposal that's made up of several different sections. One of my election inspectors is here, and he's already on the ball with it, so thank you, you're right. It's, it's, we will have a copy of the sample ballot in our office for you to review, and it's also available online, but it won't seem like a simple ballot, but it really is just one question, so to speak. Anyway, you can't vote if you don't register, is the bottom line, and that's really what I wanted to say. There's still time to register, and if you register now, or you work through your change of address issues, then you'll be all set for the rest of the year when we have August and November elections coming up. So that's it. It was longer than it was supposed to be, but it worked.
I'd say you reminded me of something else.
Oh, great.
But it did, so the Arthur Leslau Committee Center, of course, has an executive board. I know that, as we've talked through those discussions and budgets, and, and they continue to work forward of delivery of service, not only in the community in which where the center is located, but across our community in that outreach. But I know that the city manager and I believe Councilwoman Vining will be meeting with the executive board here tomorrow, just to kind of talk some of those things through. Another opportunity to get input that the two of them are going out to as we come back and ready for those budget discussions on this special meeting next Monday, so I appreciate that outreach for the two of you. So, Mr. Pastu, any comments?
Your Honor, just to add, I'm gonna have Mr. Lewis talk a little bit about the recycling totes that'll be coming out here the next week.
Honorable Mayor and Councilman Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. We haven't yet filmed the public service announcement with me popping out of the recycle tub, à la Oscar the Grouch, but that's hopefully coming shortly. Just wanted to remind everyone, next week is the week that if you would like your, if you would like your new recycle cart, we want to make sure to put your recycle bin. If you currently recycle, please put that out, and they will drop off new, new 64-gallon carts for you. One thing I didn't stress enough at the last work session, if you like your bin, you can keep your bin. They will return that to you, so if you put it out next week, you'll get the 64-gallon cart and your 18-gallon bin, or however many you have out, you'll get all those back as well. So you can keep them, you can put it inside your house, but you can put as many of all of the above out as you own, and if you don't recycle at present, but you want to go right to the 64-gallon cart, give our office a call. It's 734-384-9125 is the DPS number. Just give us a call, let us know, give us your address, and we'll make sure that you get one if you are not presently recycling. So that will be the week of March 26th. That's, try to keep everyone remembering that is the key week for it. So if for some reason they miss you, just give us a call, and we'll, we'll take care of it from there on out. So, and yard waste also starts the week of April 2nd, so, and that'll also be the first pickup for the new larger recycle carts, so. Hopefully, I took care of all of our reminders. Mr. Pastu, anything I missed?
That's good enough.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick. Pastor. With that, any comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Don Tempco, 1034 Bentley Drive. I'm here to find out what's going on with the library there. I don't know if everybody's seen how it looks in the front, the library, that entrance, it's bad shape. I noticed it a year ago, and I mentioned it, you know, here at the hall, and I figure for a year it'd be taken care of, but what is the whole look?
That's a good question, Mr. Tempco. Your Honor, I know you're referring to the Dorsh Library, and I'll let Mr. Pastu speak to that. We did chat, actually, about a month or within the last month, so, Mr. Pastu.
Your Honor, you know, as council, as prior council members, we've had a couple efforts to go out and get bids for something to repair, both coming back substantially higher. We would have to go back out again and put a lot more money into that, which we'll probably have to do at some point in time, but it did come in substantially higher than what we anticipated with the first two bids, so.
So it was put out for a bid. The bids were substantially more than was anticipated, or the revenue that was set aside. There is revenue that is, I'll just say, some on hold, but we need to go back out and find a different way.
But it's a whole year, and it's been rotten probably before that. I mean, it's gonna be like the firehouse. You guys must have held up too much on the firehouse. That's why it needs to be torn down. So I wish you would get at it and get a contractor over there and fix it, and the people on the council, if you haven't seen that entrance, look it over, the front, inside, and outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tempco. Mr. Tempco, my condolences, Mr. Tempco, my condolences on your family. I know your brother.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Really is a surprise.
Yeah, all right. Other comments from those present here this evening? See no other comments, a motion be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
McGoangeli?
Yes.